Okay, we're live.
All right, countdown.
Five, four, three, two, one. Councilmember Wyatt?
Here.
Councilmember Bowman?
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Here.
Councilmember Rivera?
Present.
Councilmember Wingo?
Present.
Councilmember Farallato? Councilmember Galamback?
Here.
Council President Pridgen?
Here.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Present.
Quorum is present.
All right, from the top.
Item one, amend annual action plan.
Um, hi.
You want to open the item?
Yes, this item is open. Any, any question? Well, we have Brendan here. Brendan, would you like to make a statement? Mr. Haffey? He's muted.
Oh.
You'd like to make a statement?
How about now? Can you hear me?
You can.
You can? Okay. Sorry about that. So, no, I just, just to add that I followed up with Malcolm. I submitted to him the streets and sidewalks that were approved by the council last July. That is the list of streets and sidewalks that would be funded with this. Again, the final decision would be made by DPW in consultation with the council members. So, that's the only update since I last discussed this item, Chairman.
Any other colleagues, any questions? Okay, no questions. We can send it without record?
I recommend that each council member get ahold of DPW and go over the list to see where they are.
Okay. Then, well, can we send it without record? Are we going to table? Is this time sensitive, Brendan?
It is just in terms of being able to get the money in place so that they can make sure that the construction goes forward this summer. So, hopefully over the next week, you know, based upon the list that you have already, those conversations can happen and everybody will be in the same page. So, if at least if it's moved to council for action on Tuesday, of course, you can always recommit if for whatever reason there's an issue. Okay?
Without recommendation then? Motion to send without recommendation, seconded by councilmember Noakowski.
Great, thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Next item.
Item number two, Controller's Budget Response 2020 to 2021.
Item's open.
This item is open and we have the Controller's Office here. Delano, you're going to speak? Mr. Dow? You're muted. Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yes, on the Controller and her team, we did review the administration's budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. We'd list the items as far as the revenues and appropriations that we had a few concerns over. We understand this is a unique situation that the city and other municipalities is going through in regards to finances with the Corona pandemic. We identified three of the revenue concerns we had going into next fiscal year would be the federal disaster relief, the 65.1 million. We know Congress, the House did submit a fourth stimulus package. We know Republicans are concerned with it and the president also. So, we're just keeping our eye on that. We know $65 million is a lot of money in regards to budget for it, but we don't have any documentation supported. Another administration has had communications with the federal government. So, it's really for us to point out the concerns that we have. So, that was one of the revenue concerns we had. We also had concerns in regards to tribal PAC agreement. We understand that the administration budget and the $11 million for this upcoming budget year. And we haven't received any of the tribal PAC revenue from this current fiscal year. So, that was another concern of ours. And once again, they might have, the administration might have conversations with the state, whereas we don't. But as we went through the numbers, that was a concern for us because we know we haven't received any casino money or tribal PAC money since technically 2017, even though the state did advance 7.5 million to the, to the city last fiscal year. And that there is the violations, the administration budgeted like 5.5 million, I believe, and traffic fines. In the previous years, we've only like averaged around $3 million. So, we wasn't exactly sure. That's almost like a $2 million variance year over year. So, that was another concern of ours. And once again, we know this is a budget. We know they're basing their numbers off their review and Controller and her team is basing our numbers off our review. So, overall, those like three of the main revenue concerns that we had in regards to this budget. And then as far as expenses, judgment and claims, we know based off previous years, and that's one thing that our group do is really look at previous year, the actuals. And we know it's hard to tell what's going to be, what's going to happen in the future. And we know that the administration do work with a corporation council in regards to anticipated claims that we might have to settle in upcoming year. But based off previous years, we've averaged probably a payout, so I want to say between 40, 5 million, somewhere around there. And I think we only budgeted around 2 million this upcoming year. So, we, that's another one where they're going to budget based off their review and we're going to do our review and based, we're going to budget based off our review and our analysis. And then the last one really was the overtime. We've seen that they reduce overtime, I think by by $5 million year over year. They might have, the administration might have something in place where they feel that overtime will be reduced based in this upcoming budget year. But we more looked at it once again, as far as the actual overtime costs that we've incurred over the past two or three years. And we, the Controller did list a chart in her response to show the actual overtime compared to budget over the past, I want to say, four or five years. And we really do look at it. We know this is unique. We know it's hard to even figure out what the revenues will be in this upcoming year. But once again, our group really just looked at actuals and we tried to work to understand where the administration was coming from in regards to any appropriations or revenues that they budgeted for this upcoming year. But I think the hot topic, we all know, is the federal disaster relief. That 65 million is going to be huge for the city of Buffalo. We hope we get that stimulus package passed and everything works out. But that's something we definitely have to keep our eye on today and going forward. Questions or?
You're on mute, Councilmember Wyatt.
I was asking if the administration wanted to respond. Commissioner Eschrich, you're still on mute. Okay, what's that?
Are we good?
Yeah, you're good.
Good morning, everyone. Sorry.
Good morning.
Um, well, we'll respond to the Controller's report. We know the federal aid is up in the air right now. We know it has passed. The HEROES Act has passed through the House and it's coming to the Senate this Friday. So, we're looking forward to getting a positive answer on that. We do have some contingencies if that does not come through. So, we're willing to work with the Controller on that. You know, we may do some deficit borrowing if it came to that point. We are looking at the casino money. We are following suit with the state that they have put that into their budget this year. Once again, we, so we followed and we're getting closer to an agreement per the discussions between the state and the Senecas. Under the TBA where they're concerned about the increase in that line is the school bus arms. And we have a two and a half million dollar line in there, which is the guarantee from the company. So, that's why that line has been increased. And the school zones, once again, we have the 20 areas that we have approval for that will be starting in September when the schools open up. Claims, we put 2 million every year when the law department has outstanding settlements. They've let us know and we've worked with them on that. And at this time, we are not aware of any outstanding settlement that would be coming through for the next year. We have, what other? I think those were their concerns. Overtime, we are working with each of the departments. Police has dramatically reduced their overtime. Fire is working on reducing their overtime. Public Works in the last few pay periods, once again, has reduced their overtime. And we're working with each of the departments. So, there is no non-mated, non-mandated overtime from now going into next year also. We did reduce the aid from the state, which by 20%, which we haven't gotten anything on yet. So, that may be an overstatement. We did reduce sales tax by approximately 20% and that may be an overstatement. So, we are trying to be conservative going forward in our other projections also.
Donna, relating to the overtime, you said that, what did you do as far as overtime with the departments?
We are requesting through the mayor's office that there will be no non-mandated, like minimum manning and things like that are mandated, but no non-mandated overtime.
Now, the minimum mandated hours, is that a state thing or is that just what we've decided on our own as far as the minimum levels for fire or police? Is that, is that state mandated or is it just we've come up with that?
Those were contracted.
Contracted.
Through contracts through the unions, correct?
Got you. So, it's not something that is a national standard or something that we can refer to?
Well, you'd have to get more information from the fire commissioner, but they feel having those four people ready to respond gets the truck out and you're there within your four-minute response time.
So, I know from the Controller's report, it shows that we are on pace to give, is it 22 million, almost 23 million in overtime?
Yes, for the current year?
Yes.
Correct. Yes. So, we've been working with all departments and to reduce that.
Okay. Any questions, colleagues? Councilmember Bowman? I'm sorry, Councilmember Bowman and the Council President, I'm sorry. Councilmember Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Delano, can I just ask about deficit borrowing? As far as the Controller's opinion and also what are the current statutes? Like the current interest rates and also the term for deficit borrowing as it stands right now?
Oh, one thing with the deficit borrow, I know the Controller and her team has had, has had conversation. We haven't talked to the administration at this point and we are, the Controller is looking forward to having a conversation. In regards to deficit borrow, we know this is unique and it's not normal. But due to this pandemic, we are able to deficit borrow due to the revenue shortfalls to this unique situation with COVID. We also know that the city can borrow up to 5% of their total overall budget. The budget for this, this current year is a 509 million, 5% of that is around 25 million. So, they are able to borrow up to $25 million for deficit borrowing, something that we've been reviewing. We're just having conversations and like I said, the administration will have a conversation with the Controller at some point. As far as the interest rate, we haven't, won't have any information on that at this point in time. It's just something that if it needs to be done, the conversation need to be had. But I think we, from a Controller's perspective, is more aligned, let's see what are all our options, not just deficiency borrowing, but what other options do we have?
Okay. And what about the term? Do you know like what a, the term would be?
Right. Currently, the legislation, New York local finance law is two years. But I believe there's conversation in regards, trying to spread that over 15 years. But right now, it's two years to my knowledge, to my knowledge.
Yeah, I just want to clarify what it is now. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Eschrich?
Mr. Delano was talking about two different things. There's a deficit note and a deficit bond. The deficit note would be the 5% and it would be payable within the two years. And the deficit bond is payable over 10 years. And we went out for a ban recently and we received under a 2% rate on the interest rate on that. So, we feel comfortable since so many municipalities are in this same predicament that we would continue to get a good rating on if we went out for a deficit bond. And these are not things that we're, these are contingencies. These are not things that we're going to do right away. We're going to wait until the federal disaster relief comes in and see how much we get. And if there's a large hole, then we would move on to our next plan.
Now, Commissioner, for either one of those items, the deficit note or the deficit bond, is the maximum still the 5%?
The deficit note is 5%. The deficit bond is not. The 10-year bond is not a maximum, or excuse me, a minimum.
What's the minimum on that?
The deficit bond is whatever your deficit in your budget at that time is. So, we would come to middle of the year and see where we were. If we needed to bond at that time, then we would decide how much.
So, is that, is that an annual payment?
That would be an annual payment, correct.
Okay. Council President Pridgen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of questions. If we had to do the deficit note, how long does that process take before money is actually in the bank? Is question number one. Then I have two other questions.
Greg?
Hi, this is Greg Samansky, investment debt officer. So, the deficit note, we would have to close before June, prior to June 30th. So, then at closing, the money would be available as far as the deficit note goes?
Now, the June 30th date is based on the budget going into effect in July?
Well, we would, the deficit note would be for the current year budget that we're in. It wouldn't be for next year's budget because we wouldn't know that the deficit on, you know, June 30th for next year's budget.
So? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so like a deficit note, if we acted on it now, it would, we would have to close prior to June 30th.
So, the deficit note is, does not affect the upcoming budget? Is that what I'm hearing from you? That is based on this budget we're in right now?
That is correct.
So, I'm, I'm a little confused how we're talking about the $25 million in, as we're talking about the budget going forward. That seems like a different conversation. Because what we got from the Controller was based on the review of this budget coming up. So, this deficit note is nowhere for 2020, 2021? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, what I've heard over and over is that we are, we're waiting obviously on the, hopefully, the 65 million from the federal government. However, I guess I was under the impression that the deficit note, if that didn't come through, so that, that's my fault. So, we're talking about possibly needing a deficit note of up to 25 million for the current budget and then a deficit bond, bond for the upcoming. So, we could potentially be talking about a significant amount of borrowing that would have to be paid back annually? I know one is two years, the other is 15 years. Is that correct?
One is two and one is 10.
So, I know in the past, there's been some conversation and I would have to go back and listen about extending the deficit bond up to 15, but we, that's no longer the conversation?
There is conversa, go ahead, Delano.
It's, it's two separate things. This current year, which we're in fiscal year 20, which is 2019, 2020, we possibly will, based off the analysis that both groups have done, is that we'll finish the year, we'll have a shortfall. The shortfall amount can be discussed, but it's a projection. So, in order for us to cover the shortfall, we'll look to do a deficit note. And that deficit note where we can borrow up to 25, the administration can borrow, the city can borrow up to $25 million to cover the current fiscal year that we're in. I think.
So, if, I apologize, if the current budget gap for this year is more than 25 million, where do we go from there?
We would have to use our fund balance.
Right.
So, then we go into the fund balance for this, possibly for this year. And then next year, so we go into the fund balance, do deficit note borrowing, and then for the upcoming year, do another loan that would stretch us out over 10 more years along with the deficit note and along with the, tapping the fund balance.
If we did not get the federal disaster relief?
That's the key right there. If we don't get that 65 million connection.
Hold on, Delano. Hold on. Go ahead, Commissioner.
You know, the federal government has, I mean, I think everybody is aware that the local governments need this direct aid. And, you know, we know the House passed it on Friday and they've talked about the HEROES Act and it's coming up on this Friday. Senator Reed was talking about it in the paper today. So, we feel confident that we will get federal relief. Everyone throughout the whole country is in need of this federal relief.
I totally.
We are doing this bond only as you had asked what our contingencies have been. So, that would be our contingency. We are not going to that right away. That's in our back pocket. That's Plan B.
So, I know Corporation Counsel, and I can't see him on this screen, but I believe that he was on, Mr. Chairman. If I could ask about, because there are so, there's so much in the air of what we may get, what we may not get. And I know we've talked about and later, every council member would get a call to kind of be polled on, on where they stand. So, we know whether to call a special meeting to extend the, the date of our budget decision with so much being in air. I really hope, best case scenario, that Friday, everything is passed and we, we've got it and, you know, but we still would be past the May 22nd deadline. And so, the question for Corporation Counsel is if the council indeed with so much in the air with not knowing whether the, whether we need to bond, not knowing whether the money will come through the over 60 million federal government, would it in any way, I mean, I know we would probably have to have, well, a vote of the council, but would it in any way jeopardize any poss, and maybe this is for the Commissioner, I'm not sure anybody who wants to answer, any possible money? Because I'm listening to both sides of the argument that if we extend, it could jeopardize the federal money possibly. And I just don't, I just need clarity, I guess.
Commissioner or Corporation Counsel? I mean, I think the, the analysis at this point, I mean, there's, there's two separate issues there. There's the pandemic, which kind of throws off the timelines. And then there's any type of impact delay in the budget could have. On the legal side of the equation, we have an understanding of what happens to the timelines on the basis of the pause orders, the executive orders, in the way that things are told and pushed out. In terms of how that impacts a federal response or how the federal government or Congress views the council's passage of a budget now or later, I can't speak to that.
Can anybody? Because that's part of what I'm hearing as far as why we need to make the May 22nd deadline is because we need Congress to understand that we've passed a bill. I'm not hearing from the Controller, from the Commissioner or Corporation Counsel of that fact. Okay, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Brian, Mr. Bowman? You're still on mute?
Yeah, okay. It wouldn't let me get off mute. Commissioner Eschrich, you had mentioned that, you know, if we were in such a deficit, we did the deficit borrowing, then we would use the fund balance. Which, which balance is that? Is that the rainy day fund we would tap into at that point or, or which funding would we use?
We have approximately 13 million in assigned fund balance right now. Before we hit the rainy day fund.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Noakowski?
I just have two questions. I think they're both redundant. So, Donna, just to clarify, or Commissioner Eschrich, just to clarify, is the advanced tribal PAC money currently in the New York State budget?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then just to get, just to kind of get it straight. So, pending federal relief in two, for the 2019 to 2020 budget to close the current gap, we would need a deficit note and to use our fund balance?
No. For the current year, if we have a deficit, which our third quarter gap, and I think the Controller concurs, we will have a deficit. We would do a deficit note only. We would not need to go into the fund balance.
Okay. And then, so then for the 2020 to 2021 budget, we would then, you know, pending, you know, any federal relief, we would then use a budget bond that would be paid over 10 years?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Chair? Okay, okay, Council President, I'll come to Greg. Council President?
Um, just, how, how would it affect, and I don't, whoever wants to answer this, the, as far as operations and moving forward, if in fact, we kind of waited a week or so as long as the executive order is there for passing this budget until we have some more facts? Would that in any way send the city into a tailspin? Would it affect payroll? Would it, what would it, what would it negatively affect if, if the council did decide to wait?
It would be illegal, perhaps.
It would be, you said it would be illegal?
No, no, no. That would be illegal, illegal, would you have to answer that?
Corporation Counsel here. It would just push everything back. And we'd be right up on the doorstep of the July 1st beginning of the fiscal year. So, you'd have everything taking place a little later.
Okay, but it wouldn't send us into a tailspin. People would still be paid. Vendors would still be paid and we would just continue to operate as normal, I would assume?
Yeah, because we're still in our current fiscal year. So, this budget we're talking about is for next year. So, I know our Department fires AP and audit will continue to process vendor invoices for payment and payroll will still continue to generate and post.
And this is my final question, I think. Because we are, you know, if we pause the deadline, we have received a letter, email yesterday that is asking, I think Kevin, Commissioner Helfer was still on, asking for some statistics concerning traffic tickets and demographics. I don't, it was also sent to the administration. I don't know if you have had a chance to take a look at that. So, my question is simply, is that something possible to get to the council as soon as possible before a budget decision?
Hello, Council President. I just received, I just received it yesterday. Myself, along with staff and Deputy Commissioner Grimalia are reviewing everything. And hopefully, we will have answers to those questions within the next day or two.
Thank you. I know our deadline is possibly the 22nd. So, it would be great. And we all did, Commissioner, just received it. I just received it yesterday. As a matter of fact, a reporter called me to let me know that it was, that it was in my inbox. So, I do understand that the time constraints, I'd like to be able to answer them and have the council be able to consider what their request is before the budget, if at all possible. Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome. Mr. Samansky?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to just clarify about the, the budget. The deficit bond. So, it's my understanding that like the, the current, you need special state legislation to actually do a a deficit bond over the 10-year period. So, I guess the assumption is, is if everybody would need to do it, that, you know, special legislation by the state would be enacted to do that. And then also, as far as the deficit note, to be able to go out the two years with that. To be able to to go out the two years with that. The next year's budget would have to be passed if, so if we did a deficit note prior to next year's budget being passed, we would only have one year to pay it back. Just a little clarification on that, so.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Greg.
No, that's, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware about the. The as far as the bond issue that there would need to be special legislation.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Thank you very. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We've talked about deficit borrowing, whether deficit note and deficit bond, which requires state legislation. I don't hear any other contingencies other than borrowing. At some point, I mean, you can only borrow so much before you have to make some tough decisions because we have to pay this back. At some point going into the future, we'll know based on projections. On revenues and expenditures over time and everything else, some of the concerns. That the Controller's office shared with us. What is the contingency there? We're, I mean, we're relying on borrowing. That seems to be the word right now, borrow, borrow, borrow. And one requires state legislation and one is for this year and you can only borrow for one year. When I was talking about contingency, I, is there any other contingencies to go along with the borrowing? That we're talking about right now?
Um, the mayor, we have discussed with the mayor a number of comprehensive adjustments. Throughout the whole city. He's, we are not publicly discussing those right now. We are looking at everything and everything is on the table at this point.
Well, thank you very much, because those are the conversations that I kind of, they're internal and I understand that. And 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 I appreciate that, that you have to keep it internal. But it's good to know that those conversations are being had. Because here we are talking about borrowing, borrowing, and we have confidence in you. And and the administration as well to make some tough decisions. And we, you know, all of us have to make tough decisions at some point. So it's good to know that that is happening. We assumed that it was happening. But and for for your purposes, obviously. I don't, I don't want to get into it because I don't think anybody wants to discuss that here on Zoom. But those conversations, I hope, were included in those conversations in the future. Some of the contingencies that you're considering and help us prepare for the decisions we need to make. Thank you.
Right. Certainly.
Commissioner, you mentioned that we have a thirteen million dollar fund balance?
Of assigned fund balance.
Assigned fund balance? Okay, where did that come from? Have we always had that?
Yes, it's through our carry forward and the claims.
Okay. I just wanted to read a couple of things for my colleagues. Because I want facts, not innuendo. In twenty seventeen. We budgeted five hundred million dollars. We actually brought in four hundred sixty one million dollars. That's the actual number. In twenty eighteen, we budgeted five hundred two million dollars. We actually brought in four hundred and seventy one million dollars. In twenty nineteen, we budgeted five hundred thirteen million dollars. We brought in four hundred ninety one million dollars. So we have been behind the curve for the last several years, and I said this during one of our conversations that we've been averaging four hundred and seventy five million in revenue. We already have a deficit. And so we can continue to get money in grants. I mean, we want the grant money if the state comes through. However, we have an internal issue that we kind of kicked down the road. Because it seems as though we cannot meet our obligations because we don't have enough revenue. I know the Commissioner talked about being creative and creating other revenue lines. However, we haven't been successful with that as of yet. The only success that I recognize that at this point, and I think the Controller spoke of it too, is our enterprise fund. It's now managing itself and it actually has an excess. When we look through, when I look through some of the tax revenues and some of the other areas. We do have a number of areas in which we have surpluses. But still our expense line is still kind of high and our revenues aren't where we want them to be. So there's got to be something more than just borrowing. And I'm concerned about the borrowing because I guess Greg or someone from audit. We got a letter from the Buffalo Fiscal Stability Board, which is another concern. Because it seems as though our finances not are not in in place. And we are looking for other areas to try to supplement our revenues. Is that something that they would be, would push them to a, well, I guess this is for Corporation Council, excuse me. Is this something that will push us, push them to a hard control board? Because of our, the last number of years, we have not met our revenue projections.
Tim Ball, Corporation Council, in order for the control board to go from. Advisory to essentially a control period. They have to determine that there is an imminent fiscal crisis. And then, you know, one of four things also needs to happen. Where a budget isn't adopted or a financial plan isn't adopted, we can't pay. The principal or interest on a bond or a note. We have an aggregating aggregated operating deficit for. One of the financial periods for basically a year. Or the city controller says we can't go out to market because essentially we wouldn't be able to meet those obligations. That's just a may for the control boards to even have the discretion to take a vote as to whether or not they'd go into a control period. My understanding is that they've offered their comments on the four year financial plan and just saw input. Back from the administration to clarify some issues.
So can I ask you this, Corporation Council? So do you see us in? In in a, in a situation where we could go hard? Or do you think we're pretty, I mean, we just have to work through it?
I I don't see. An imminent fiscal crisis at this point. It's, it seems like everybody from the municipal side of the equation is in the same boat. And is waiting to see how we come out of all the lockdowns. Occasioned by the pandemic, so I think everybody's kind of doing the same thing in terms of offering their best analysis, even though. None of us thankfully have experience in this regard of. A national and global pandemic that impacts finances this way.
Because I just wanted to make one last point. Commissioner, it seems as though that, I know you said that the budget is conservative. But from the Controller's report, it says that it believes that the revenues were overestimated. And the expenses were underestimated. So can you just speak to that?
Well, they had a couple of the revenues that were. What we believe were inaccurate. They did not respond, include the. Bus camera arms, where they're talking about the TVA, so that's two and a half million dollars right there. They said our sales tax number was too low by seventeen million, so we reduced it. Too much, so we're being conservative there. Our state aid has been reduced where there has been really no announcement at this point of any reduction in state aid, and that was a thirty two million dollar reduction. So I think we are being very conservative on our revenues. Bringing them down.
I just questioned possibly the 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 arms. Because we've not, we don't have any historical data. And someone can tell me it's a guarantee, but until you test it, you really don't know. And I know that with schools being up in up in question, are we going to have school in for fall or not? Those are all. Issues that we don't know for a fact. And so it seems as though we'd probably be a little bit more conservative, but for us to say. That we're going to get two million dollars out the gate for the school bus arms. I just question that, and I don't know if that's really as conservative as we should be on that particular item.
That was a guarantee through the company, so that's where we put that number.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, Councilmember Columbia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions. First to Corporation Council Ball. We've talked about the possibility of extending the budget vote past the twenty second. Tim, what would, what would the council have to do in order to extend the vote beyond the regular budget date?
Tim Ball, Corporation Council. I would suggest just putting in writing and having council action that indicates as a result of the. Pandemic, the shutdown, the pause orders and the myriad of circumstances that we're confronting right now. The council would take advantage of the tolling of any limitations period or deadline period. Contained within the city charter and code pursuant to the executive order up until. The date that that is no longer in effect, which at this point is June sixth.
Okay, um. Would would that take a vote by the council in order to do that?
It would be my suggestion that it's clear to everyone if the governing body, the council, does do that, so. It's. There's not any question as to what the council's intentions were or what authority it was relying on.
Okay, so you're saying that there would have to be a vote by the council?
That's my opinion.
Okay. Donna, Commissioner Estrich, what are, in your opinions, uh, uh. The benefit or lack of benefit or problems if the council was to extend the budget past the twenty second? It sounds like there could be an issue with borrowing, but I'd like to have that clarified. What are the pros and what are the cons?
As Mr. Samansky said, for doing a deficit note. You have to borrow between the date of the bud, next year budget being adopted in the end of the fiscal year. So that would close down the timeframe to do the deficit note. You could be ready to go and you'd still have time to do it, but it would reduce the amount of time. Other than that, I don't believe there would be much, we'd have to get our taxes ready. We do our property tax bills, start getting prepared. Obviously before July one, because they have to be ready to go out, but we would prepare those. As with rates that we have now in the budget. So that would be the only time sensitive item, I believe.
Okay, and then the date June sixth was bandied about, would that, would that be the date that we would have to have the budget approved by?
Yes.
Do we have any guarantee that the federal government will have a number for us by June the sixth?
We have, no, we're confident this Friday, we're going to have a vote on it. And we are positive, well, we're not positive, we're optimistic that we'll have a, you know, a good result out of this vote. But we would not have to. Do any kind of next year borrowing. Until we get into next year. We couldn't borrow for next year until we start the next fiscal year.
Okay, well, I I for one would rather see this council vote yea or nay on the mayor's budget within the prescribed time. I know that there's concerns about numbers, but. In all the years that I've been on the council, there's always been questions, you know, about the numbers that have come in. And there's been times when I've been uncomfortable voting for the budget. There's also been times. When I was critical of the budget and I remember there were members of the council that put in budget amendments. That actually slashed a part of the mayor's budget. You know, so when we talk about, you know, the mayor having to borrow or the administration having to borrow twenty or thirty million dollars because their estimates were wrong. This council can't make additions to the budget, but what we can do is we can make cuts from the budget and. I for one do not want to sit down right now and have to make sixty five million dollars worth of cuts on this budget. I don't think that, you know, the contingency is necessary as of yet. I do have the anticipation that there will be money coming from. Washington DC to assist us, as Commissioner Estrich said. Because this is not something that's only impacting Buffalo. Or blue states or democratic cities. This is something that is catastrophic across the, across the entire country. And so I do believe that there will be some assistance that comes in, you know, what that final number is, I don't know at this point. The problem is, is that if we were guaranteed to know that number by a certain date, I could understand. The desire to extend the budget vote, but even by June sixth, we may not know what kind of funding, if any, is coming to us. From the federal government, so I for one would oppose extending the budget deadline. And would hope that we would vote on it within the normal parameters. Because it just seems to me that, you know, if there's an argument in Washington DC. It's better to have a budget so that they would know what our actual shortfall is. Rather than waiting and giving the opposition the opportunity to say that. Gee, even in Buffalo, they don't have a budget now, so they must not need the money. I mean, I think it's one of those damned if you do, damned if you don't situations. I would rather see this approved. This week, let's get it over and done with, and then God forbid, if we do end up in some sort of a budget crisis. We're going to have to work with the administration to make some very draconian cuts. And I hope that we don't get to that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Council President Pridgen?
Yeah, and I. My concern about this budget going forward, when if we don't, for instance, do any action. Before the twenty second. And we come upon the twenty second, which is Friday. And if there is no vote in the federal government, or if there is. And the vote is not for sixty five million. We then at least buy enough time. In my opinion, to make as 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 Councilmember Columbia said, you know, we can't add, but we can take away. And so there will have to be a a vote, well, and I agree with Corporation Council and and we've started. To put something together so that there possibly can be. A meeting to discuss this and and make a decision based on the majority of the council. I think what's so different in this situation, rather than, for instance, a late state budget. Is the fact that we knew we would get a state budget sooner or later. Or any other type of revenues coming in late and the council making a decision. I'll give you an example, in the last budget. I too voted like the majority for the casino funds, which were not there. However, I voted for them after I had. Not just assurance, but sat in a room with the budget director of the state of New York and and heard them say. We will spin up that money. The difference between. Not knowing what the expectation will be from like a state budget and the federal money. Is that, again, no one on this call. In this meeting from the administration said, this is the amount, we know at least this is coming. We don't, we we just don't. At all, we don't know if it'll come, but but what we do know according to Commissioner Estrich is that. There will be a vote on Friday, so let's say for instance. We did, we did nothing to at least have the ability to extend this budget. Then when Friday comes, regardless of what the federal government, we would have to have this budget pass. That's where my concern is. Again, nobody from the administration in this meeting has said that it would send the city into a tailspin. That no one would be paid, even in talking about the loan. What I just heard was we can get ready for it. And it may take, I mean, it might, you know, where if we did the budget on the twenty second, they would have from the whatever, the twenty second on. But the Commissioner said we can get ready for it, it would just be a tighter timeframe. And so, you know, for me, and this is only for me. I am not comfortable in voting for a budget with, when we're still waiting. For the folks in Washington to say, this, this is voted on and this is coming forward. It is much different than the waiting on casino funds. It is much different than the waiting on state funds. So I guess we'll have to bring it to a vote and and then figure out, and then then we move that way. If if the, if we are not able to call a special meeting because we can't get five. As as my colleague said, he would vote against the extension, I would vote against this budget. I cannot in conscious, good conscious. Vote on a budget this large with so much at stake. That we're only saying take a few more days, possibly a week, two weeks, to make sure. That we have those revenues coming in and not to have to push the can, kick the can down the road. And say, well, okay, in three weeks, we're going to do the hard stuff. Why not do the hard stuff right now? Is my, is my, my, where I'm at, and that's only Darius Pridgen saying that, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Wingel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I need some clarity. I've tried to get clarity, I've tried to get to.
Uh, I've tried to get clarity, I've tried to get some understanding. I've tried to get some communication on what it is that's transpiring with this budget between the council and the administration. I'm trying to make a decision, and I don't have the information to make a decision to not vote now. I don't have the information to make a decision to push this off. So I, I need some clarity on, on, on what exactly we're waiting for, even though it probably has been danced around. We still need to know exactly if we don't pass the budget with the sixty five million dollars in it for twenty, twenty, the twenty twenty one. What exactly are we costing the people of the city of Buffalo? If we, for, if we prolong this process, what difference would it make since we already have to pass a budget anyway? So if we don't get the sixty five million right now in this budget before we pass it, that means we're gonna have to make sixty five million dollars worth of cuts? Somebody help me, please, because I'm not the only one that's lost. I'm sure I'm not.
Uh, uh, I'm, I'm trying to understand where the loss is, because that's basically what it is. It's not understanding is clear. If we don't get sixty five million, we have a sixty five million dollar hole and we have to make some cuts, period. Um, I think that where I'm confused is that we have had all these conversations about various issues, about an attorney, about extension of the budget, but we have seventy six million dollars, fourteen percent of our budget in limbo. That we don't have any confidence or assurances, or what I understand as a promissory note that we're gonna get that money. So at this point in time, for us to buy additional time to hear from our Western New York delegation or the federal government that we're gonna get this money, yea or nay, buys us more time. It will be irresponsible. I'm gonna use that word again, because I know I hear it a lot. Irresponsible for us to pass a budget, what fourteen percent of it is on a IOU or IFCOM. It wouldn't be responsible for us as fiduciaries for the city of Buffalo to pass a budget based on something that we have no certainty on. So for us to say, we're gonna get it, and, and you've had a conversation with the, with Congressman Higgins or Senator Schumer. I don't know, no one has talked to me from the administration about the situation. Maybe they've talked to you. But I don't, I don't know of any other further details of where this certainty is coming from, that we're gonna get this money. I know that over the last several years, we have been promised that we're gonna get this money from the state, from the casino money. We've got it once, and that was only a spin up. There's still another question mark. So there's a number of question marks um, that we're trying to be responsible and say, let's push it, let's extend it until we get more information. There's still actions that are taking place that we may get the information that either we're gonna get the sixty five million or we're not. But until then, I think it's responsible for us to make certain that we give ourselves some time and not pass a budget that we have, there's no certainty to. Fourteen percent of the budget is in limbo. It, it would not be a responsible thing to do.
Okay, so let me just respond, uh, because you, you basically said that you're confused as to what.
I didn't say, I didn't say I was confused. I'm sorry. I didn't say that.
You, okay, whether you said it or not, you, 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 you basically don't understand what my lack of understanding is as relates to communication. Let me make it very, 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 very clear for everyone. No one from leadership has communicated to me what we're willing to do to assist and or aid in this budget. No one. Number one. Number two, I am not the fiduciary for the city of Buffalo. We have fiduciary responsibility, but the fiduciary for the city of Buffalo is a comptroller. She's responsible for making sure that the, we have a watchdog. Number three, the administration has not reached out to me regarding the budget. That is a fact. Therefore, I depend on the leadership and the common council to let me know where we are and where we stand and what's being negotiated and what is not being negotiated. That's where I am. Now, as it relates to this shortfall that we are experiencing, this deficit, the sixty five million dollars may be there, it may not be there. But what is the common council's solution if it is not there, period? What are we willing to do if the money does not come? What cuts are we willing to make if we do not get the sixty five million dollars? What are we willing to do as the common council? We could have had this conversation before we got to the finance committee and I could have been aware. I could have been privy to conversations that were had about the common council's budget and where we stand, but I was not privy to those conversations. Therefore, I'm asking now, what is the common council of the city of Buffalo going to do regarding the sixty five million dollar shortfall that we're experiencing? And how are we going to contribute to the mitigation of not having to lay people off in the very near future? That's what I'm asking.
Colleagues, any, any comments?
Uh, Council.
Councilmember Revere.
You know, I think we've been pretty transparent and pretty clear. We've heard from the comptroller's office, we've heard from the administration, we've heard from uh, law department, and it's been pretty clear that we can move this forward without any, we're not gonna go into some kind of spiral by increasing it by a few days. You say, what is this council going to do? Well, this council is gonna have to work with the mayor's administration. They're the ones that sent us the budget with their priorities. They know what the priorities are. They've already had internal discussions, we heard today what regards to a, a contingency plan that they have not shared publicly. So there is a contingency plan out there. Um, and we want to work with the administration. We want to, you know, we're praying and hoping, just as everybody else, that we get this money on Friday and that we can make a quick and early decision, hopefully next week, if we get the information. So, um, I don't think there's any harm here by moving this, uh, to next week. Uh, I don't think there's any harm at all. And I'm surprised this conversation, but that's fine. That's, uh, if, if you're not sure, that, that's, that's, it's your uh, prerogative if you're not clear on it, but I think that we've been pretty clear as far as the common council in our finance committee meetings, in our budget meetings and our conversations with the comptroller, with, uh, everybody that's been on Zoom, we've been very clear uh, with them, and I don't think there's any harm moving this forward to next week. And so I'm, uh, hopefully I would get good news on Friday and we can move forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Nowakowski.
So I just wanted, just for practicality standpoint, I just kinda wanna, you know, get our heads around it. So we have a budget due Friday, May twenty second. Just so coincidentally with the United States Senate voting on a disaster relief budget that includes fourteen percent of our budget the same day. So from what I'm hearing from the comptroller, from the, from budget and from, uh, Corporation Council is that there would be no big ramifications if we were to delay the vote until next week, just so we can kind to, kind of um, see what comes out of this, the Senate, so we can make a better informed decision. I think that's what I'm hearing. If anyone else, um, would like to just work through that with me, that's, that's fine.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Wingo.
Yeah, I, I, I'm still waiting on an answer to my question, just to kinda dovetail off of, uh, Councilmember Nowakowski's, uh, question. Uh, the implication of us just coincidentally having our budget deadline on the same day that the federal government, we're voting on this relief. What are we going to do? Should we not get this relief? We should have a plan. What is the common council willing to do? Should we push this off and we don't get the sixty five, now we have to vote on the budget without the sixty five million dollars in it? What are we willing to do? To, to show, wait a minute, what are we willing to do to show that we are trying to help mitigate the adverse effect that we're going to have with this sixty five million dollar gap?
Um, Commissioner Ettridge, Ettridge, did you not say that the mayor has a contingency?
Mr. Chair, I'm, I was asking about the common council. What are we willing to do? I'm not asking about the administration.
Let me finish, sir. Commissioner Estes, did you say that the mayor has a contingency plan?
We, yes, we do. We have a couple contingency plans, yes. And, and I do wanna make something clear. I was just notified by my office that the vote will not be taking place on Friday. I don't know when it will be, but it is not on Friday. So I wanted everyone to be aware of that.
Thank you. Our point, um, we will work with the administration and their contingency plan. They have the, they know all the details. They have all, they submitted the budget to us. We will work with them. Councilmember, the majority leader said, we will work with them. I will work with them. No one's reached out to me, but I'm fine with that. We will work with them. Whatever they have going forward, we are one city. Um, even though we haven't communicated as such, but we're seeing it right now. Whatever we need to do to work together for this, we will do. Um, so that's all we can do. I, I don't know, I don't have a crystal ball. Um, however, we do have information and as, thank you Commissioner Estes for that update. So for us to extend it, because right now there's no vote taking place on Friday, it just makes sense for us to wait to get additional information. Okay, anything else, Councilmember Revere?
Oh, no. Unless, unless there's any other conversation regarding this, we can table this.
Well, Councilmember Scanlon, and then we'll, Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Commissioner Estridge just mentioned that there's no vote taking place on this on Friday. Um, and I think that we can all agree that um, unfortunately, at the federal level, there's gonna be a lot of politics involved in however this stimulus package comes together. Um, I think you saw people on the Republican side immediately say this is dead on arrival. And, um, because of certain stipulations that were in the Heroes App that was voted on last week. Um, so the conversation surrounding extending us voting on the budget, my question is, based on what I anticipate would be some political gridlock, if we get to a point, whether it's the June sixth date or something, what do we do then? You know, Councilmember White, you just mentioned that the contingency plan is in place. Commissioner Estridge um, reaffirmed that. So my question is, what is the difference then between putting the budget adhering to our charter mandated responsibility to act on the budget by the twenty second versus extending it ten, twelve days when the same situation is in place, the contingency plan is in place. Um, and as far as needing the sixty five million dollars from the federal government, how do we ask for the, the federal government to provide us sixty five million dollars in assistance if we don't have a budget in place that reflects our shortfall?
Who, are you asking?
Uh, uh, yeah, anyone really. Um, you know, as I meant, as I said, there's certain council members that are talking about extending it. I don't understand what changes if the contingency plan was already, is in place. And we've all agreed that it's not in place. It's not being discussed publicly, obviously, for certain reasons. Um, but it's in place already. Um, my, I would rather that we moved on the budget, finalized the budget that shows that we have a sixty five million dollar hole. The federal government then realizes we have it, we need to fill it, rather than sit in limbo and they not know exactly what we need to fill that gap when the contingency plan is in place already.
Councilmember?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I agree with you. You should have a budget in place and that shows the gap. And then come next year, you have a budget in place. If we don't get as much money as we anticipate getting, then we would go into our contingency plan at that point and borrow money. Or maybe at that time, we wouldn't borrow. We would look at other things. But any of those amendments or, um, the adjustments made by the mayor would have to come to the council to be approved on the moving of the monies around.
So what, what is it? Why don't we put forth the contingency plan first? And then look at getting the money. Why don't we put that in place since we know that's certain? If we don't get the sixty five million, why don't we work?
We're not certain, we're not gonna get any federal disaster. And if we put in borrowing, then it's like they, they don't, you're, they're gonna say you don't need it. You've already borrowed money.
Yeah. Councilmember Scanlon?
Yeah, um, well, I think, to answer your question, I think the contingency plan is Plan B. Plan A, we have to have a Plan A in order to resort to a Plan B first. Um, Plan A is, we have a budget in place. Obviously, we would love to all have the funding in place on day one, but because of this health crisis, we're not going to. Um, obviously, we need some assistance from the federal government, and that was worked into this budget. So I think Plan A would be, we approve a budget that says this is how much money we need and then move forward. If the contingency plan would be Plan B, which would be a combination of borrowing and or cuts. Um, I, I don't understand why we're jumping to maybe Plan B before trying to execute Plan A.
Right.
I, I, I guess when I asked, when, uh, when this, the, this whole issue came forth and the control, uh, Erie County Executive said he's gonna do cuts. He didn't say, I'm gonna wait for the federal government. He said, we're gonna do cuts because we can't wait and put people in limbo. And, um, so I, I don't know, it's, it's about your approach, it's about leadership style. Um, but at the end of the day, um, there's a big question mark that I wouldn't be comfortable um, agreeing with a budget, that there's a big question mark on that. I've done many, many, many budgets. And never have I just took a number and plugged it and said, oh, this is a possibility. You have to have some level of certainty and confidence in that number. We don't have that confidence. We don't have the certainty. We've been told we're gonna get this money from the Senate, because over the past couple of years, and it just hasn't happened. So, you know, we, we, we have to be in a certain position and have the information as clearly as we can. I mean, there's still gonna be some situations where we may not be as clear. But at least we've given ourselves some opportunities, because again, here we are thinking that the vote's gonna take place on Friday. It's not taking place on Friday. So what do we do? We have to wait. So.
But you may not have an answer by June sixth either.
Yeah, right, right. But that gives us, at least gives us some more time to, if there's other things happening, and we've talked about this, Congress is making negotiations and those things, it does give us more time to get good information. I just don't know about us just going blindly on something that, you know, at least we give our ti- our, ourselves some more time to get more information. And it will be helpful if the administration would reveal to us their game, their, their Plan B. We, we have no idea. No idea what Plan B is. We've heard from you and some others that there's a Plan B. We don't know what it is. So.
Plan B would be the deficit bond.
For sixty five million?
Well, no, it'd probably be a combination of, uh, bonds and some other budget adjustments.
And, and we would be able to pay that with our current funding issues, our revenue issues, we would be able to pay that?
We would reduce our capital borrowing in our years.
Okay.
For our capital projects.
Okay.
And it would offset that.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just one, yeah, if, if I'm gonna vote on the budget, I'd rather as a council member vote on the budget that doesn't have a sixty five million dollar budget gap. So that is why I want to wait, uh, and hopefully get this money so I can go down and say, hey, I didn't vote for a sixty five million dollar budget gap. We waited. Um, and that's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see for the, the federal government to come forward, um, in the near future, if not, hopefully by the sixth, uh, to buy as much time as we can, so I don't have to vote on a budget that has a sixty five million dollar budget gap. And that's one of the reasons, I mean, it, I find it hard to vote on a budget like that, where we're relying on things that aren't sure. So I'm hopeful, along with the administration, that this has worked out, so we don't have to vote on a budget that has a sixty five million dollar budget gap. Thank you.
Can we move on this item? Motion to table. Councilmember Go on back.
Yeah, you know, um, there's one solution that nobody's, uh, talking about right now, is voting on the budget on Friday and making sixty five million dollars worth of, worth of cuts. We're pointing fingers at the mayor and asking for what Plan B and Plan C and everything is. Um, why don't we make sixty five million dollars worth of cuts? We could pass the budget on time on Friday. Um, but, you know, I, I think we don't wanna do that. Uh, I don't wanna do that. Um, I wanna take the gamble that the federal government is gonna come up with the money for us um, as risk number one, just like every budget that I have voted on, this is my twenty first budget. There have been items in there that have been a throw of the dice, that have been a risk. Um, every year, we anticipate that we're gonna get, well, this year approximately a hundred and fifty million dollars in property taxes. Um, I think that we anticipate that ninety seven percent of people will pay. What if this year, because of the budget crisis, only eighty?
What if this year because of the budget crisis, only eighty percent will pay? You know, we're not talking about the potential of thirty million dollars in property taxes not coming in. Um, we're picking and selectively choosing where we have concerns. And I understand that, but if we're going to be consistent, we should be looking clear across the board. We don't know that any of this money. Is going to be coming in. We do know that once the federal government tells us what money's coming in. And it could be next week, it could be next month, it could be next August. Um, it could be beyond that. We don't know an exact date of when that's going to come in. But if we want to be, you know, serious about this, I mean, why, why aren't we taking a look at making cuts? Uh, right now, um, why aren't we looking at making cuts from the council and the clerk's office? Um, you know, I think that it's easy to grandstand and say, let's not uh, vote on a budget because of this sixty five million dollar hole. But we voted on budgets every year that have holes, that have if comes. Um, you know, I have faith in the administration. I have faith in Commissioner Estrich. That they're doing the right thing. I also have faith in the city government. That God forbid, if it comes to a point that A, we don't get the sixty five million dollars. B, we're not able to borrow funding, that C, we will be able to make those very, very difficult cuts. But I certainly hope that we won't end up getting to that point. Once again, my recommendation is, is that we vote on this budget on Friday. And then God forbid, if there's an emergency that comes about after that, that we meet and we work with the administration, just like we did back in oh three, oh four. When the uh, control board came into play.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowman.
Um, just want to say more or less that uh, to Councilmember Galenbeck's point, this is a big throw of the dice. This is something. Um, so significant with sixty five million that we're talking about thirty million for prior year deficit. I'm interested in um, also the long-term impacts the deficit borrowing would have on our uh. Financial finances and I'd like to know more numbers, um, and more information about deficit borrowing. But also I think it's going to be a combination of, you know, what comes in from the federal government, what we can deficit borrow. And then I think the council would be ready to make some cuts, but I think um, we should. Extend our ti- give us more, ourselves more time to be able to um, be privy to some of those contingency plans and see how this all plays out. Thank you.
Motion to table. Councilmember Wingo.
I think Councilman Runowkowski had his hand before me.
Councilmember Runowkowski.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make, you know, just one final point. I think, you know, in order to get more comfortable and uh, to, to vote on this budget, I think. Collaboration is key and I think that, you know, we need to collaborate with the administration, with our Western New York delegation to. Um, start hammering out some of these, these plans, just so we can, you know, move to a more comfortable spot of, of voting. So I think that we need to exert uh, collaboration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just final thoughts for myself. Again, the, uh, this situation. Is not unique to the city of Buffalo. Uh, there are other cities. Across the state of New York. Uh, in this great country. That all need the same di- uh, disaster relief from the federal government. We all need it. I don't think. That a lot of us. Mean any ill will. Or we mean any malice when we're talking, uh, and expressing ourselves. And I understand that this is. A very, very, very emotional time. This is a very, a lot of people are very uh, sensitive right now, including myself. Uh, because of what we all are experiencing and what we're going through and having to be decision makers. The, the responsibility falls on our shoulders to do what's right. Now, as I'm teaching my students in class, I tell them that there's a difference between leaders and managers. Managers do things right. Give them numbers, they'll give you and give them an equation, they'll give you a number. Managers do things right. However, leaders do the right thing. And I think this council needs to do the right thing. And the right thing is because the sixty five million will be here whether we vote on Friday or not. We need to move forward and vote on the budget. Since we have not really offered. Any type of remedy. Though it may not be our job, we still can't cut. The budget. We may not be able to add to the budget, but we certainly can cut the budget. We've not done that. I mean, even with the ninety five uh, thousand dollars for this position that we will no longer be hiring, that's still in the budget. What are we doing with that? We need to cut that. There are a lot of things that we can do to contribute. I may be standing alone. But I'll stand alone. But at the end of the day, the common council needs to communicate with each other. And then we also need to communicate with the executive branch so that we can come up with these things that folks are claiming to be. Uh, private conversations or things that we're not privy to. There would be no privy conversations. Or privy contingency plans, or privy this or privy that if there was true transparency like we like to tout about. So at the end of the day. My personal opinion, Ulysses O. Wingo Senior, representing the Maston District. I'm suggesting as well that we vote on Friday. We cannot control what the federal government does from this point. So if we have a contingency plan, let's pass the budget and then enact the contingency plan. But let's not, not vote at all. Excuse the double negative. And, 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 and have to worry about just kicking a can down the road. That's something that I don't think that we can afford. Uh, in the city of Buffalo. And I think our constituents uh, deserve more from us than that. And again. Very sensitive moment. I understand everybody is speaking their heart on this issue. But at the end of the day, we need not uh, push the rope just because uh, of some uh, ideal issues. The fact of the matter is, we have a deficit. The fact of the matter is, we have a responsibility according to the charter from this city. To vote on Friday. Let's do our jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera, all right, motion to table. Motion to table, seconded by Councilmember Bowman. Next item.
Item number three, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, third quarter gap sheets.
Items open. These items open. Any questions, gentlemen, on this item? Any questions at all? Um, Commissioner, I just have a couple. Um, the projected April sales tax. It shows seven million. Are we, are we comfortable and confident with the seven million?
For April?
Yes. The projected sales tax.
We have received, where is mine? We are, uh, through April, we are um. On um, pace to meet where we were before. Receipts we get in April. Because the receipts um, are from February.
Okay.
Because February sales, they submit them in March and then we get them in April.
Okay.
Our actual, eh, the ones we receive in April are from February sales. So those are still very strong.
So, so are the previous numbers accurate then? I mean, if we're, because we skipped over the other. Months.
I'm, I'm not sure what you're looking at when you.
Well, I'm looking at the cash flow.
Oh, okay.
And I'm looking at the sales tax revenues.
Okay.
And um, it's showing, okay, so in February it showed we received ten million. But we, but we were averaging.
Yep, I had ten million, right?
But we were averaging, I believe we were budgeting like six million a month. For sales tax.
Um, that would be Greg Simansky, how he does it. There's a difference from month to month. He does the cash flow.
Okay, Greg, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, so eh, the actual receipts for April were about uh, seven point four. And as Donna said, I mean, those were kind of consistent because they were related to. You know, s- sales that happened from February and March. So the April number was, was pretty good. The main number that just came in um, recently was. Down between twenty and thirty percent based on like what we received last year. Um, so that's when I did my April actual cash flow, which I don't think. We have now. I, I think we have the March, which is kind of obsolete now. So. Going forward, I kind of, I, I kind of looked at what came in and, and prior year in May and June and just. Kind of reduced it by about thirty percent.
Okay, so. So the seven point, the seven million is okay for April. That's what we, what we did.
Yes, yep.
And so you're comfortable with the other two numbers for May and June of three point one million in May?
Well. Yeah, I mean, the, the main number is, is, is pretty good because I. Um, because I, it comes in in the first couple of weeks in May, so that, that should be, it was about four and a half. And then June, we actually, I think we actually get three, three payments in June, so that number's a little bit higher.
Got you. Last question, um, so it's Donna. We, we're still on, on place to receive the ninety eight million state aid, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions? Any other questions, councilmembers? Okay, oh, Councilmember Noakowski.
Just a quick question, Commissioner Estrich. So where, eh, you have stated previously that there's going to be a cut in state aid for next year. When would we anticipate um, that lower amount next year in our next year budget?
Um, I believe we'll see it in our payments starting in December.
Okay. So that reduced payment we would start seeing in December.
Correct. So it'll be for the next fiscal year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, motion to table.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number four, BFSA requests new four-year plan.
Items open.
Okay, this item is open. Um, and I think Corporation Council did give us some feedback because um, there was a concern about our financials. And as it relates to the control board, um, he kind of, for me, rested my mind. Um, that they, there's not the, the um, setting for a higher control board. So that was good news. However, I think the control board did pick up on some things that we had some concerns about. As far as the debt borrowing, um, because there were some statements made that. Um, we could go out fifteen years because there's legislation that being proposed. But they would not hear that because of they want to go act from the current state of what the legislation is currently. Um, the, come, uh, Commissioner Estrich?
Um, we are responding to the control board's letter and it's kind of, as we stated in the previous conversation. They're asking us what happens if we don't get the sixty five million. So then we're going to lay out for them, we will, you know, the contingency, Plan B, we will borrow money for the next year if it comes to that point. We will see what happens in the budget and then we make adjustments going throughout the year. And it's the same type of thing where the mayor's going to make an overall. Comprehensive adjustment throughout the budget and have different options to choose from throughout the year to adjust the budget. And that's being prepared for the control board.
So, so will that be part of the, will you be preparing that? Will you have that conversation during their next meeting? Was it Wednesday tomorrow?
They're having it um, Wednesday as they're meeting. They are postponing our review, our four-year plan review.
Okay. Any other questions, colleagues? Okay, motion to table.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number five, February and March twenty twenty cash flow report.
Items open.
Um, any questions? Or any, any controllers?
Well, we filed that report. We also, we just filed April cash flow report, which will be on a council's agenda. For next week, Tuesday. So you guys take a review at that. I'm sure that'll go to. Um, committee and then we'll be prepared to answer any questions in regards to the April cash flow report.
Any comment? Okay, motion to table.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Galenbeck.
Item number six, Miller Williams City Financial Status Report.
Items open.
Um, the controller's office want to comment on this?
Uh, this, this was a request uh, from the council for the controller. Uh, to uh, come up with a report or analysis of city finances uh, at that point in time. That report, the numbers that we ran was as of uh, April twenty second. Uh, the controller listed uh, the concerns uh, that she had and her team had in regards to the city finances due to the COVID. Uh, pandemic. Um, at the time, I think we were showing a deficit of thirty five million dollars. We also noted that there were still nine weeks left uh, within the fiscal year to truly see uh, where the city was at. Um, what we also did, and just to prepare you guys, is that the controller and her team is working on um. Uh, uh, gap response to the third quarter, um, from what the administration had submitted. So we'll be prepared, we'll file that uh, by this week, Thursday, two P M. You guys will see it uh. In council, Senate to finance, then we could discuss our. Concerns or our, our points of view uh, to those numbers or um. We, we can discuss them now, but I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at uh, any of the reports at this point in time.
Any, any questions, colleague? Uh, Mr. Chair, is, is it possible to just give a bird's eye, eye view, um, Mr. Uh?
Yes, um, basically, the administration, they projected to have a shortfall of fifteen point six million. Whereas when the controller and her team did their review, we're showing a shortfall of twenty four point four million. A difference of almost between eight point eight million dollars as far as the shortfall at the end of this fiscal year. We have, um, we did reach out and we did work with the administration, Commissioner Estrich, uh, yesterday. To determine where our shortfalls rely. Our shortfall was in. Sales tax, um, they're showing more short sales tax uh, this year than we are. Uh, we're showing, they're showing additional five million dollars in sales tax. They're showing additional two point seven million dollars in fines. And then additional million dollars in parking revenue. If you add those three up, that's roughly the eight point eight million difference between the controllers uh. Review compared to the administration's review. And like I said, this, this is a projection and we base our numbers based off. Actuals and then we know the information that we have available at the time that we're generating uh, our response. Uh, we'll see uh, where the city in uh, at the end of this fiscal year, but basically there's a difference of eight point eight million dollars. Between our uh, shortfall in the city and in administration shortfall.
So in layman's terms, can you, can, either of you talk about why there's a difference uh, in the numbers? I heard you say that the, you all look at the actual. Then what does the administration look?
I think, but both groups look at the actuals and, and, and they look at uh, projections. I think in regards to two things, is one that when administration ran their numbers, they had actual numbers up to March thirty first. Where we ran our numbers as of uh, May twelfth. So we, we was able to have almost. Let's say six weeks of additional true data compared to when administration was able to run theirs, run their numbers. And also, we um, decreased sales tax over twenty percent over the fourth quarter. At the time, we don't know what information that the administration had in order for me to determine if the sales tax was going to decrease as of March thirty first. So it, it is different avenues, but it's, it's like. The information that they have when they run a number is an information we have when we run our numbers. We're comfortable uh, with the numbers that we submitted and I'm pretty sure the administration is comfortable with the numbers. Uh, that they submitted. At the end of the day, we want the city to finish uh, in a positive, but based off our analysis. Uh, we're showing a shortfall identity year of um, twenty four million dollars.
So the, and again, tho- those are projections. I want to make sure.
Correct.
You are watching, that these, this isn't a definite, it's.
It's not. It's a projection based off its calculations that we use. We assume or we think here's where we're going to end the year at.
So yours is on the high end of about twenty four million, you said?
Correct.
And the.
Administration, uh, fifteen point six million.
So we know somewhere in between, possibly, because.
Possibly.
Projections could be wrong, uh, but somewhere in between fifteen and twenty four million shortfall.
Correct, for this fiscal year that we're at.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Commissioner?
Um, the biggest difference is the sales tax and we had done our projection on. Um, April's receipts were going to be twenty percent reduced, which they came in, I think they were twenty three percent reduced from prior year. And then we did May and June's as a fifty percent reduction. So that's how we calculated what we thought sales tax would come in at, and that was approximately an eight million dollar reduction. Whereas I believe the controller's office did the last quarter and then just said it was a total. The whole thing by one third less. So that's, there's a little bit. Different way of looking at it, and I think that's where the biggest number comes in, difference comes in.
Uh, Commissioner, um, Mr. Chair, I'd just ask one last question. Now that we are seeing uh, an opening. Um, of the state in some areas, do we, are, are we adjusting those numbers now, kind of the projection? Or kind of just staying where we were?
Um, we had put in no opening at the end of the year, so with this opening coming, hopefully early June, now and then early June. It will improve a little bit.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions? Um, Commissioner, uh, as it relates to the Enterprise Fund. I know that we've had some surpluses because of the user fee being increased. Is that money being applied against that outstanding receivable?
Yes, you're in. Accounting reduces the outstanding receivable.
Accounting does that?
Yes, they do.
Okay, the inter-fund balance, the fourteen million, what is that related to? What, is that, that's a bunch of loans that we've transferred in and out? Um, is that just a bunch of things? That's not the uh, uh, accounts receivable for the Enterprise Fund, is it?
No, that's when we get a grant, but you have to spend the money before you get the grant reimbursement. So they do a loan to, it's mostly public works accounts. So they do a loan to fix the streets. We apply for the grant and we get the money to get paid back.
Okay. Will that be, because that's supposed, is that supposed to be cleared out the same year or the following year? Cause I know that that was an audit issue.
It depends on when the project started. You know, some projects are twelve months, some are eighteen months, some are even longer, like Niagara Street has been going on for a few years.
Okay.
So it depends on the project. Some are short-term, some are longer term.
It coincides with the project length of time?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, any other questions, colleagues? Okay, motion to table?
Motion to table.
Councilmember, seconded by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number seven, City Financial Status Update.
Items open.
Okay, Controller's Office, wanna talk about this? I think you already did, right?
Yeah, uh, that's uh, administration's response to.
Okay, Commissioner?
Um, sure. I have Jessica Brown, the Director of Administration and Finance, and she was, has done a review, a more recent review from our third quarter. So she can kind of talk about where she's seen us ending the year also.
Okay.
Hi, Jessica Brown, um, Director of Administration and Finance. Going off of the third quarter gap, we look like we're gonna end the year around the same deficit, fifteen million dollars. Since March third, we've had four pay periods. Um, and looking at that, we've had. Police and D P W overtime has been trending downwards, fire has been trending upwards, which is kind of evening out. And based on the revenues that we're projecting, it's pretty close to the way we projected gap. And um, the expenses are coming in close to how we projected the gap report. So we're still looking at about fifteen million dollar deficit for the end of the year.
What, what is our payroll per payroll? What is the amount?
Mister Estrich?
About seven million. I mean.
Okay, any questions, colleagues? Any other questions? I think you all wore down. So, um, Commissioner, so going forward, oh, is there any plan of, so are there gonna be any additional hirings the next couple of weeks? Are we holding the line on hiring anyone going forward?
Yeah, we're holding, as of right now, we're not hiring anyone. Unless it would be a revenue producing, someone like a parking enforcement officer when we bring that back on again, but. Other than that, we're keeping uh, the people we have right now.
Okay. Any other questions?
Motion to table?
Motion to table, seconded by Councilmember Galumbet.
I don't think there's any other items?
No other items? Nope.
No other items, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Wingo. Thank you all.
Thank you.